Full immediate order, please rise. We can have a moment of silence to keep our thoughts and prayers for the victims at the Georgia school shooting and their families. And of course, ask for our military and law enforcement, all first responders to always return home safe. Thank you. Flag.
Flag to the flag, United States of America. Consider our efforts as stands, one nation under God.
According to the Women Health Committee rule, in this public meeting, if the collection of homes contains fertilized newspapers and posted on Middlesex County website, as well as on the bulletin board in the Middlesex County Administration Building, it is 48 hours until the end of this meeting, which shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Go ahead, Paul.
County Commissioner Askoel Barber, do you?
Here.
County Commissioner Kenny, County Commissioner Coppel.
Here.
County Commissioner McCollum.
County Commissioner Nara.
Here.
County Commissioner Comer.
Here.
County Commissioner Gere.
Here. Do you have some recognition?
Yes, recognizing the 2024 replenishing hunger heroes, recognizing the honorifics of Dime Below the Line events, proclaiming September Senior Center Month, proclaiming September as Fals Prevention Awareness Week, September 23rd and 27th, 2024, proclaiming September 16th to 20th as Assault and Nutrition Awareness Week, proclaiming September 2024 as National Recovery Month in Middlesex County, and recognizing the honorifics of Mexican flag raising.
Is there a motion to adopt the above recognitions?
Second.
Go ahead, Paul.
County Commissioner Askoel Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Coppel.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Comer.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Askoel Barber, present to replenish hunger heroes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to invite Jennifer Apostos to join me when we recognize all the volunteers that made our event this year a successful one. Without the volunteers, we will, the county commissioners board would not be able to do what we do. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight and for the volunteer job that you do for us.
Jennifer?
Thank you. Yes, so September is Hunger Action Month, and we like to take this opportunity to recognize some of our hunger heroes that we attribute to doing some great work in our community. So our first hunger hero is the government hunger hero who we are recognizing, Mark Dinglessen, who is New Jersey's first ever food security advocate. Mark and his team play a vital role in organizing food security efforts throughout New Jersey, ensuring best practices and strategies to increase enrollment and outcomes in state's food security programs. Mark understands firsthand the importance of this work through his experience as director of Kumak in the Seaf County, where he led the fight against the root causes of hunger and poverty to create more just food systems and partnerships. Mark supports replenish, recognizing the integral work that we do in feeding our neighbors here in Middlesex County, and has helped build collaborations with counterparts across the state and provide opportunities for assessment and growth to better serve our residents. We look forward to seeing how Mark will lead the state in transforming how we address food security and improve the lives of our neighbors. It's been my honor and pleasure to know Mark for at least the last four or so years. I know we commiserated during COVID when our organizations had to face the pandemic and figure out new ways to attack food security. So it's a great honor and pleasure to recognize him tonight and that he has been elevated to this position in the state to be able to help lead this fight. So Mark, please come up.
Thank you to all the commissioners, thank you to Jennifer, and thank you to all of you. It really is a pleasure to be with you all here. I was telling my good colleague of mine, a good friend of mine this morning, that sometimes you get so deep into this work that it's very hard to take a step back, look up, and tell yourself that you're making a difference. So I'm eternally grateful to all of you here for the opportunity to say that I love my job, I love being in partnership with Jennifer, I love my team, and I truly love the fact that I believe in New Jersey, and especially in Middlesex County, we're making a difference in the fight against hunger. I tell everybody in Trenton all the time that there are several counties that are really leading the way in this work, of which Middlesex County is one, not because I'm also just a new resident of Middlesex County, I just moved here a year ago, but it truly is awe-inspiring to be with all of you here, and I am committed to helping replenish and helping Middlesex County however we can at the state. So, thank you again.
Couldn't agree with more and more. I love my job too, I love working with the team at the state and all our partners. So next, we want to recognize the Tom Ellison Food Pantry Hunger Hero. This year, we're recognizing Kathy Ruff. Kathy has been a volunteer for the past 30 years for the Society of St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry in New Brunswick, and she's been an integral part of their operation. Kathy picks up at replenish at least two days a week, she delivers the food to the pantry, and works with and trains their volunteers on the preparation of shelf-stable food bags and fresh produce bags. Kathy trains new food pantry director when he started 10 years ago, and frequently makes recommendations to improve the operation. Kathy leads the collection and assembly of holiday baskets as well as toiletry bags, and recruits additional volunteers to support these efforts. Kathy's dedication to serving the community and fighting against hunger and food insecurity is seen in her everyday actions. Kathy also shared the love for cooking and her giving spirit of Tom Ellison, making her most deserving of receiving this honor and this memory. I've had the pleasure of knowing Kathy for 28 years, and she's a sweetheart, and she's been a very good friend, she was a very good friend of Tom, and he would be so pleased to see you receive this recognition tonight, so come on. Next, we're going to recognize our community hunger hero, and this year we're recognizing Bruce Winkler. Bruce served in the Navy Seabees from 1965 to 69, where he was trained to be a steelworker and make three deployments to Antarctica to help build living quarters, storage facilities. After coming out of the service, Bruce worked as a cable splicer at New York Town and later as a conduit inspector, retiring after 37 years. Upon retirement, Bruce volunteered at the Franklin Food Bank, where he met and became friendly with Tom Ellison from McCoos. One day, he jokingly asked if McCoos was hiring, and the rest is history. Bruce worked with replenish part-time for 10 years, and in 2023, he had to make the difficult decision to resign when the work became too physically demanding. The only crew at replenish was one of the most difficult things he had to do. The team had become more of a family and a second home than coworkers had a job. As time passed and Bruce felt better, he came back as a volunteer because he just couldn't stay away. Bruce makes significant impact volunteering with replenish several mornings a week. Bruce's experience allows us to lean on him for various tasks from sorting, bagging, cleaning bins, to making special care packages and more, while stating to heavy lifting for the staff. So it's been a pleasure to know and work with Bruce for the last 10 years, and we're so glad to have him come back as a volunteer and not leave our family. So come on up, Bruce. All right, now we're going to recognize our corporate hunger hero, and this year, we're going to recognize Bristol Meyer Squibb, who's a leading global biopharma company operating in New Brunswick since 1905. Bristol Meyer Squibb is committed to being a good neighbor, supporting and strengthening communities where their employees live and work. Bristol Meyer Squibb, through financial support and volunteer efforts, are helping to feed and shelter individuals and families in need in their local communities. This includes supporting major food banks with food distribution events, serving meals to families, completing improvement projects at local shelters, and organizing employee-led drives for food, clothing, and goods. Bristol Meyer Squibb has donated a total of $185,000 since the beginning of 2023, allowing replenish to do a lot of good, including the purchase of hams and chickens, which were distributed in March ahead of the Easter and Passover holidays. Bristol Meyer Squibb volunteers helped us distribute the meat at this event alongside the replenish team. Bristol Meyer Squibb has also contributed hundreds of pounds of food from employee-led food drives over the years. We're so grateful for the longstanding commitment of Bristol Meyer Squibb to supporting replenish and improving the food security work in Middlesex County. It's my pleasure inviting you to come up and receive your recognition. Thank you so much.
I'm just going to point out, both my parents retired from Bristol Meyer Squibb.
I'm Ryan McDud, new to Bristol Meyer Squibb, so short speech, but thank you to the county for this recognition, and we're excited to continue working with you.
All right, so we recently had an event called Dime Below the Line: Hunger Awareness Dinner and Cooking Competition, so I'd like to recognize our two chefs this evening. Brian Carlick of Steakhouse 85 in New Brunswick. Brian fell in love with restaurants at a family friends diner as a teenager, and Brian trained at the Culinary Institute of America and quickly advanced in his career, going from school to an executive chef to a managerial position. He honed his culinary skills and in November of 2008 opened Steakhouse 85, where his tagline is "Keep It Simple." Brian had a passion for cooking and knew that feeding people was part of his trajectory. Partnering with and sustaining the community is an important part of Brian's restaurant and philosophy. Brian volunteered to partner with replenish in 2022, where he competed in and won our Dime Below the Line cooking competition. Brian returned in 2024 to defend his title, and he won for a second year in a row. He created filling and nourishing meals for a low price with pantry staples. He shared tips and tricks on how to take food and ingredients to meals, and showed how a can of sweetened condensed milk can be turned into caramel sauce with just time and boiling water. Brian and his team know the importance of a good meal that is not just hearty, but delicious too. So we are so grateful to have established this relationship with Brian and his team at Steakhouse 85. We're grateful for your collaboration and partnership, and look forward to seeing what you create next year. And lastly, we want to recognize Brian's competitor this year, Chef Maricel Gentile of Maricel's Kitchen in East Brunswick. And unfortunately, Maricel couldn't be here tonight, but I'd still like to give her recognition and give her some credit. Maricel was born and raised in the Philippines, where she learned from her Lola's Kitchen the importance of fresh ingredients and authentic flavors. Her professional career includes since working at prestigious restaurants in New York City. Maricel wanted to introduce diverse and vibrant flavors of the Philippines to the Western palate, bringing the taste of her home here. Maricel understands the importance of food to nourish and fulfill both physically and spiritually, leading her to create Maricel's Kitchen in 2017. Here, she makes Filipino cuisine widely accepted and enjoyed by others by teaching cooking classes to spread her knowledge. Maricel volunteered with replenish to compete in the 2024 Dime Below the Line cooking competition, creating dishes such as chicken adobo and pork and shrimp shumai dumplings, to highlight the importance of bringing your culture to the food you create. She prepared filling and nourishing meals for a low price with pantry staples. She showed that items received at food pantries do not have to be devoid of one's personal background and heritage, and how delicious it can be when recipes celebrate that. Maricel and her team gave the community a night of food and togetherness, helping to raise awareness that food is more than sustenance. We should share and celebrate our diverse background and cultures where we share meals as well. So we're very grateful to Maricel.
On behalf of the Middlesex County Board of Commissioners, I want to thank you very much again. Thank you for the time that you volunteer and for everything that you do for our community. Thank you so much.
So those delicious recipes, where could a person find those?
They are on our website. We have www.middlessexcounty nj.gov/replenish, and there is a page dedicated to Dime Below the Line. We have a recap video of the night, we have our chefs' videos, about five seven-minute video from each chef preparing those dishes, and the recipe book, so you can get all of those recipes online. Thank you.
I would also like to thank everyone that volunteers for the partnership. Volunteerism is something that not, it wasn't like a bunch of years ago where so many people had the ability to volunteer. Because of now, because of people who have double incomes in their house having to work hard, and it's commendable that you all volunteers so much because you're making such a positive impact on so many people's lives, and ending hunger is a challenge, but you're doing it, you're really doing it. So thank you for what you do. And at this time, if whoever got recognitions, if you want to leave or you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you can, you can leave also. It's up to you.
That's what I was waiting for, someone to give the, what's up Matt, how are you?
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Go up to the front. Is there a motion to accept the correspondence? On favor, opposed, or gathered? This is your approval.
Minutes of the regular meeting held on Thursday, 11 June 24.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Go ahead, Paul.
County Commissioner Askoel Barber.
Listen, I'm not worried.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Coppel.
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
County Commissioner Gere.
Yes.
County Commissioner Gere.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Kelsey, do you have any resolutions to be added? I'm sorry, I'm reporting, Commissioner. Commissioner Claudio Dallas, go ahead, Barbara.
Thank you, Director Vias. Tonight, we issue a proclamation in honor of National Recovery Month. In the 35 years, National Recovery Month has spread the positive message that behavioral health is essential to overall health and recovery is always possible. The Middlesex County Behavioral Health Navigators are here to guide our residents through their wellness journey and can be reached to 732-745-3810. September is Hunger Action Month. Replenish is raising awareness of the food security needs of our community, and you can get involved in many ways. Please visit our county website to view our Hunger Action Month calendar, and that concludes my report, Director Vias.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Kenny?
Nothing today, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Wes Coppel?
Thank you, Director. Tonight, I will present a significant development that has further modernized how the county manages and oversees our financial operations. A new financial system upgrade implemented this week titled Finance Enterprise. Our financial system is the backbone of how we financially interact with and provide services to the public. From managing budgets to processing payments and tracking expenditures, everything we do is tightly connected to the reliability and efficiency of our web-based platform. A highlight of the upgrades to the system was shifting to a cloud-based solution with the intention of being able to provide quicker installs, faster updates, and allowing accessibility to be a secure single sign-on from any device, making on-the-go approvals and reviews possible. Finance Enterprise features advanced analytics with robust workflow automation tools built specifically for Middlesex processes. This continues to transform day-to-day operations and generates smarter decisions for the financial health of our community. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheryl Scott McCollum?
Thank you, Director. Good evening, everyone. From the Arts Institute of Middlesex County, on Saturday, September 14, from 11:00 to 5:00 PM Eastern, Old Town will be setting the stage for a roaring 20s jazz party. Party like it's the 20s and celebrate the Charleston, the defining song and dance of the 1920s created by New Brunswick's James P. Johnson. Michael Aronella and his Dreamland Orchestra will create the looks and sounds of the 1920s while performing popular jazz music of the period. The Canarsie Whoppers will hold dance lessons illustrating the proper steps of 20s music, and the Sub Ranch will sing some soulful selections. There will be several food vendors, and you are welcome to wear your best 1920s attire. Director, that is your turn to report.
Thank you. Deputy Director Shanti Nara?
Thank you, Director. From the divisions of Environmental, Solid Waste, and Recycling, this Sunday, September 8, our divisions will once again be commencing our fall paper shred events. This shredding event will be held in South Brunswick's Beachwood Park, which is located at 137 Beadman Road in the township. The program will be held from 9:00 AM to noon, bright or shine, and residents may bring free of charge paper items for shredding, thus protecting their personal information and identity. There is no need to remove paper clips or staples, but please do not include other metals, as these items may disable our shredding devices. For additional information on this event or any other planned event in this division, kindly visit the county's website or call our divisions at 732-745-4170. From the Office of the Sheriff, it's my pleasure to announce that in July of this year, the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police recertified Middlesex County Sheriff's Office under the leadership of Sheriff Mildred Scott with state accreditation. This is no easy task, and the sheriff's office has accomplished this difficult certification three times, which is required every three years by the state chiefs to retain this professional status. Less than 8% of law enforcement in New Jersey can boast on accomplishing this certification three times in a row. On behalf of this board, we'd like to congratulate our sheriff, as well as her entire staff and the officers of the sheriff's department on this prestigious honor. And that's my report, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Tamaro?
Thank you, Director. This September, Middlesex County is joining a nationwide biopharma. Spend time in your favorite Middlesex County park, take photos of pollinators like butterflies and bees and the plants and flowers they enjoy. You can upload your photos to a free smartphone app, which can help you identify the plant or animal you observed. We already have over 250 observation log pit in the i-naturalist app. Our youth conservation corps just finished up another successful summer season working on our conservation areas and preserves. This summer, they maintain over 35 acres of existing trails, which include tiny trail markings clearing invasive plants, building the bridge at Thompson Park Conservation Area, and removing 800 pounds of debris. You can join our youth conservation corps at our first all fall volunteer on September 28th, celebrating National Park Command Day with trail work and habitat improvements at Davidson Mill Pond Park in North Brunswick. This October, place at a park annual fall children's show is presented, James and the Giant Peach. Bring your family to see the musical based on a popular children's book. The show runs on weekends and October between the 5th and 19th. There are two shows at each day, 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Tickets are on sale Monday, September 9th, and they are $4 for adults and $2 for kids. Information on all these events and park programs can be found on the Middlesex County website, parks.com/frecreation. I also want to highlight that our summer place at the park ended. You know, in August, we had three plays, and it's our 62nd season, almost 24,000 people attended our place, over 12,000 for Beauty and Peace, which are most attended, and that was with 12 for rainouts and some very warm days, so we had another successful season. A little bit of hope for the next season, our 63rd season next year.
Thank you. Your turn to report, Director. Thank you. Thank you. I would just like to remind everyone that school is back in session, drive carefully, watch the kids that are getting off the school buses or getting on the school buses or playing around. It's important to be mindful of that. Okay, Mr. Kelsey, any resolutions to be added?
They're not.
Any resolutions to be amended?
They're not.
Resolutions to be held?
They're not.
Resolutions to be voted?
They're not.
At this time, open up the meeting. Our resolution is always listed, always listed. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners Charlie Cradell in Brunswick and Brunswick today. Start on page six. 1113 is the arrangement for ALS and NLS Services here in Brunswick. Is this the agreement with Robert Wood Johnson? Correct, or?
Charlie, who is the director of New Brunswick?
So you pay for Brunswick, and they pay Robert Wood?
To be quite honest, Charlie, we did further research on that, and I'll provide a more clear answer.
Okay. I think if the same arrangement that's been in place for all the time, I've been coming around, I think it's that, but I would like some information out, for instance, if there's any promise of how many units they'll provide. If you could look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thanks. Moving on to 1115, what's the corrective action plan say?
So, Charlie, this is to acknowledge change in process for our audit. It's particularly a bank reconciliation process, and it's derived from one of our stat numbers to fill that position at this point in time for a few decades, so it's essentially just modernizing the practice. Simply more efficient with downloads from the web-based platform or the county website directly, and it's ultimately just to acknowledge to our data practices.
Okay. And so there was a finding in the 2023 audit, or?
Not necessarily a finding, just sort of mark of, broken in our bank reconciliation.
Okay. For what it's worth, I did try to look on the county website and find that audit, but the most recent one I could find was 2021. Is this one available yet?
I'm not sure if it's available with public, but we'll do first thing tomorrow morning to make sure it's public, if it's a final version. I think there's still signature being taken on it.
Okay. Thank you much. Moving on to page eight. At the bottom, 28 and 29, these are agreements for improvements or in one case a brand-new train station. Any update on the timeline? I know we've been talking about both Brunswick train stations for 20 years. Is there like a timeline where we can say? If you take a train there?
We would love for that to get done real quick. Obviously, there's many entities that we have to deal with, and between Anthrac, between New Jersey Transit, and these are the obstacles that we have to deal with, these regulatory processes. Unfortunately, do they move as fast as I would like? No, but it's the process that we have to go through.
Yeah, and the NJ Transit and Anthrac have really been letting down the riders, at least in recent years, and yeah, we gotta do something about this. I don't think we can just keep putting it on them and say they got to get their act together. Is there a timeline in these agreements, or no? Is there a timeline in these agreements, or no?
There is. There are timelines. We made them maybe a couple of a while ago. We haven't got time for that.
Okay, I would eagerly await improvements to our public transit system. They're sorely needed. On page ten, speaking of transportation, a hundred fifty thousand dollars for operating ride and bus services. Which route or which services?
Which resolution, Charlie?
Eleven thirty, right at the top, page ten. Is this a specific route or a specific program?
That's for JAR?
Yeah, JAR.
Yeah, so what it is, is we get a match for a hundred fifty thousand dollars and be matched for receiving that benefit. So this is the reverse commute on the end of the shut system.
Excellent. Thank you. We go on to page twelve. Eleven fifty-eight. Can I just understand what this solid waste management plan amended is about, what is proposed to change, and what kind of hearings it's gonna be at twelve p.m.? It's gonna be in-person only? Or, I see it says virtual, so is it virtual and in-person in a five or five?
The Solid Waste Advisory Council, which is made up of representatives from every member of each community, reads so many times a year and goes over different solid waste issues they deal with. This one happens to be dealing with Middlesex Borough. It's a recycling paint company. And what is in front of you there is our creatures who are hoping will authorize us to have a public hearing on that and to be heard on that.
Okay, it looks like the...
Time's up.
In-person at twelve and virtual at six thirty?
Thank you.
It's good to have them.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Second.
On the favor?
Hi.
Opposed, or taken, or taken? Does anyone have to go and make a separate leak?
I'm here. I have two items. Twenty-four dash one, one, six, four, R. And twenty-four dash one, one, six, five, R.
Anybody else?
Yep. I have four, Director. Twenty-four dash eleven twenty-eight. Twenty-four dash eleven twenty-nine. Twenty-four dash eleven thirty-eight. Twenty-four dash eleven thirty-nine.
Anyone else?
I have one, and it's twenty-four dash eleven oh nine.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Kelso? Director, a motion with me in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers twenty-four dash ten eighty-one through resolution twenty-four dash eleven sixty-five, excluding resolutions eleven sixty-four, eleven sixty-five, eleven twenty-eight, eleven twenty-nine, eleven thirty-eight, eleven thirty-nine, and eleven oh nine. We go to the last set. Is there a motion? Motion to adopt?
Second.
Local call?
County Commissioner Ascoa de Barber?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner Kenny? Can you, Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner De Aron?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner Rios?
Yes. Now, Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolutions excluded by Commissioner McCollum, and that's resolution eleven sixty-four and eleven sixty-five. Is there a motion to adopt? Motion to adopt?
Second.
Local call?
Can you, Commissioner Ascoa de Barber?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner Kenny? Can you, Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner McCollum?
President not voting.
Can you, Commissioner De Aron?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner De Aron?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner Rios?
Yes. Now, Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolutions excluded by Deputy Director Nara. And those are eleven twenty-eight, eleven twenty-nine, eleven thirty-eight, eleven... Is there a motion to adopt? Motion to adopt?
Second.
Local call?
Can you, Commissioner Ascoa de Barber?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner Kenny? Can you, Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner Nara?
President not voting.
Can you, Commissioner De Aron? Can you, Commissioner Rios?
Yes. Now, Deputy Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolutions excluded by Commissioner McCollum, and that's resolution eleven... Is there a motion to adopt?
Seven. Sign.
Local call?
Can you, Commissioner Ascoa de Barber?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner Kenny? Can you, Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner De Aron?
President not voting.
Can you, Commissioner Rios?
Yes. Okay. I'll open up the meetings in the public. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Charlie Cradville, once ago, editor in Brunswick today. Wanted to ask about a few items. I continue to be disappointed that we leave the state in more vehicle crash fatalities. I know Route one and Route one thirty are two of the most dangerous roads in the state. And yeah, I wanted to ask if there's anything specific that the county is doing about those roads, one or one thirty?
There's certain things that we have control over, Charlie. Anyway, we can make improvements. Route one and one thirty are state roads, obviously. If we get feedback or we get data that people or law enforcement agencies are recommending changes to those, we would certainly follow up with that agency. I know Commissioner Kenny, if you have anything else to add?
In regards to one, one thirty, they're state highways. But as a county, we continue, as I said previously, Charlie, to review the data that we have long-term, not just, you know, short-term, to see where we can work to improve our roads and our, you know, implement our vision there.
I continue to be disappointed in the Transportation Coordinating Committee was dissolved and not having meetings. I feel like that would have been a good place to coordinate about this problem with the state and with other leaders in the field. And since those meetings aren't happening, that coordination doesn't appear to be happening. I urge Commissioner Director and all the other commissioners to speak to state legislators, to speak to Governor Murphy about Route one and Route one thirty. And let's get some action going. Let's get some proposals to make it safer, because so far, I see what's going on is not moving in that direction. Has the Open Space Committee had any meetings this year?
I'm sorry.
The Open Space Committee, have they had any meetings? I guess you're...
Charlie, over there.
No meetings this year?
I can't answer that.
When it comes to open space meetings, obviously, those are duties handled by the management team and operations, including finance, parks, recreation. But we meet on a regular basis with all the questions that come in by the management side of this.
So really, the Open Space Advisory Committee has regular meetings?
The Open Space Advisory Committee during COVID was no longer a meeting. And since then, we've followed with all the meetings throughout the space and done my internal operations and made regulations.
So similar to the Transportation Coordinating Committee, the public component has been removed from the decision-making. And yeah, why is that done? Why don't you have an Open Space Advisory Committee anymore?
Again, the Open Space Advisory Committee is a representation of many of the municipalities. And based on the relationships that we currently have with the twenty-five municipalities, that's an ongoing communication to make sure we're clearly understanding with their request of open space acquisition and open representation. So that communication is not based on just one meeting. That's what goes on at a regular basis.
Okay. I've got to ask about Thomas Edison Park. I don't know if you've seen this article, but I got a copy for you. So just for the record, I'm drawing your attention to an article in the student newspaper at Middlesex College, Colobus. It's titled "Middlesex Track Team Remains at a Standstill." Is it true the county college is canceling its track teams due to the county's closure of Thomas Edison Park?
I can't answer that. I don't know.
Okay. Well, I've put that question right into the county. I haven't gotten an answer just yet, but I did that earlier today. I hope you can answer, because that's sort of the allegation in this article. And I believe that even the college is saying that. So wouldn't that be an example of the CIO plan urging students, specifically student athletes? And speaking of the athletes, why did the county choose for this mega project to have all or almost all of the fields being artificial turf?
There's a multitude of reasons why we use artificial turf. It's less faintness, and it lasts a lot longer. And these are recommendations that are made by the professionals that are on this project. It's not the first time that artificial...
How long does it last?
It lasts ten, ten-plus years.
Ten years, and then what do you do with it?
Then the top service gets replaced.
Right, but what do you do with the waste? It's not recyclable, right?
It's waste that goes to life.
Live, right. Okay, so every ten years, you're gonna have to throw the field out. Turning park land into parking lots and synthetic fields is not a good idea. Your own documents in support of this do note that there's a loss of ecosystems such as CO2 spiking. And I'll continue the conversation later. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? A little close about the course of the talk. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Benjamin Guy, thirty-five, I drive, I live in Somerset, Massachusetts. But I just want to make, I'm going around in each one of the counties and make them aware. There's a new bill that's coming down the pipeline that's gonna affect youth that's in the juvenile justice system. That's gonna be done, and I just want to make sure that the county's aware because Middlesex County, you actually house some of our incarcerated youth on a regular basis. So what it is, is that there's a division on your Medicaid, Medicare resources that's coming down from a federal mandate, and they're pushing it back on the states to actually mandate what's gonna be happening with the youth's option for that. So I want to make sure the services are being supplied to those specific families because it impacts their lifestyles as they go along. So a lot of times what happens when they're locked up, they're detained, their water services are taken away from them. So now, what it is, is from a federal mandate, they're maintaining that their CHIP programs and their other health resource plans need to be maintained before that. And then they're supposed to have access to this thirty days prior to getting released to the public. Now, that's gonna put a burden on the incarceration system because the state is not helping you out and the federal system is not helping you out. This was stated on the call.